So that is the first of the items on the agenda. The fourth item is conduct a public hearing. This is going to come up in the city council agenda, regular agenda, this issue, this item. But in the zoning board of adjustment agenda, conduct a public hearing regarding a request by the owner agent of property situated in the city of Van Alstine, county of Grayson, state of Texas, being described as G-0770 McKinney Acres and HRS A-G0770 acres 0.5 and G-0770 McKinney James and Ayers, that's what it stands for, A-G0770 acres 0.65. More commonly known as 332 North Henry lines Expressway. It's currently zoned commercial district -2. This is a request for variances to Van Alstine code of ordinances, section 46-38 and section 38-6, to allow the structures currently existing to remain as they are, to allow the use of non-concrete material on the parking lot, and so as not to require landscape areas 10 percent and detail of plant material used. All right, and so the gentleman requesting the, or a representative here? Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I should have seen.
That's okay.
Did you have anything you wanted to say about this?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, just that it's, the ownership of the property didn't change and the use of the property didn't change. I've just leased the property to, it was a used car lot. I'm going to continue.
And how long is your lease?
Three years.
And, okay, now that's, and you don't know the eventual will of the owner, whether he's eventually going to sell it or not?
I do not know.
You probably recognize that that's a fairly fine piece of property?
I do.
And that he may very well get an offer someday that he doesn't want to turn down and sell it for a bunch of money.
I agree with that. It's probably what's going to happen eventually.
Yes, sir. And if that did happen, would it take you long to liquidate whatever assets you have in that property? How difficult would it be?
It'd be expensive for sure to move. I'd probably spend $50,000 just cleaning up and getting ready, licensing from the city, licensing from the state, and cleaning up the property since I've been, and that's been three months. So it's expensive to move. I hope to stay there three years, but it's his property.
And then after three years, anything you have to say?
That's correct.
Are there any other public comments or questions about this issue, this piece of property? I see no hands. I'll ask a second time if there are any other comments or questions about this item. And I see no hands once again. Third and last call for comments regarding this. I see no hands, and so I'm going to move on to public hearings, item number five. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request by the owner agent of the property situated in the city of Van Alstine, county of Grayson, state of Texas, being described as divisions Van Alstine Block 3 Lot East 1/2 of 7, 140 by 150, more commonly known as 278 North Dallas Avenue, currently zoned commercial district -1, for variances to Van Alstine code of ordinances, section 46-37D (in parentheses), area setback height and coverage regulations to reduce the required side yard setback. Is there anyone here to represent this item? Anyone have anything you want to say about this? I thought I saw him.
We're here.
I'm sorry?
It's me.
And I'm trying to recall, are there two buildings, like there are, are the buildings separate on those two blocks? They're already separated?
Yeah. I think it's, I'm, because one spot is, is, after, this, we're only, we're, I'm not sure, but, yes, two, but, both, I, 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 I.
Okay, and so the setbacks that are already existing, whatever, there is, is there? And you're not intending to do anything else or decrease the setback?
No. But, yeah, yeah, I, 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 I.
Second call for comments or questions on this issue. I see no hands. Third and last call for comments or questions on this issue. Move on, then. Items for consideration, this is going to read pretty much identically to the public hearing items that I just asked, that would have just read, item number six, consider and take any action necessary regarding a request by the owner agent of the property situated in the city of Van Alstine, county of Grayson, state of Texas, being described as G-0770 McKinney James and Ayers, A-G0770 acres 0.5, and G-0770 McKinney James and Ayers, A-G0770 acres 0.65, more commonly known as 332 North Henry lines Expressway, currently zoned commercial district -2, for variances to Van Alstine code of ordinances, section 46-38 and section 38-6, to allow the structures currently existing to remain as they are, to allow the use of non-concrete material on the parking lot, and so as not to require landscape areas 10 percent and detail of plant material used. Are there any comments or questions on this? I guess my main reason, why are you requesting under all those white places? Mr. White, what was required for jump, or change to this?
You're asking me, sir?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay. Why is, why is you requesting this?
Yeah, well, I'm saying, don't you have that certain, this is the, the item where you have to have certain reasons for making the request? Can't just be the cost of, I mean.
That's true, so you're asking for, what is, what are the recommendations? The recommendation is the council following the City's Code, section 46, 107, which rules local government code, section 211, 009A3. Please note that that can must show that the hardship is unique, oppressive, not common to the property, not merely financial, not against the public interest, and not self-imposed.
My question to you, sir, is that, as a matter of fact, there was a time period where it wasn't any longer a car lot standing?
That's correct, sir.
How long was that period?
I don't know. I would guess somewhere around a year. It was Keens, you're all familiar with Keens. The owner of the property is in White, right? His name's John Floyd. And I contacted John and asked him if he wanted to lease that property. He absolutely did. He was in a business to sell it there. And that's why I'm here now, for, to get various, so ownership didn't change and the use of the property didn't change.
Okay. What is the hardship that has made on you to make the changes? Is it a time period?
Yes, sir.
Do you have time to take to make the changes?
Yes, sir, the time period, and I don't have any ownership of the property, so.
Okay.
So I've invested my $50,000 so far to get it ready, and now where I've got all my state permits, I just need a certificate of occupancy with the city to operate.
At these various stages we discussed, the topic, do you make it just a short term?
I have no idea. That's correct. I've got a three-year lease and what Mr. Floyd does with that property in the meantime.
So if you build something really grand later on, someone decides, someone else decides to buy it, then you have to just knock all that?
That's, that's correct. I'm sure that's what's going to happen to all of this property initially. Someone's going to buy that property and raise it and build whatever they build on that corner. It's quite a valuable structure.
And it did set, nobody conducted business for some months, is that right?
That's correct, sir.
And as far as you know, was there anyone else who wanted the lease?
Not that I'm aware of.
So you would just be sitting on?
That's correct, that's correct. Mr. Floyd said he wasn't going to sell it.
I have another question from Frank right now. Is there a timeline written in the law coming along the time that you have for a business to close and it opens back up and you have to make changes to it?
Six months.
Six months.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I would like to offer something of your, while the property lay appeared vacant, I know some history on the property. Mr. Mitchell, who was leasing the property, was going through financial problems. To my knowledge, he was still under contract on the property, as I know, appeared to be vacant, and still had his stuff occupying the property, but didn't have the vehicles. And he moved the vehicles to Sherman to liquidate the assets, to, you know, potentially, you know, shut down the business. That has been within a six-month period. It has not been sitting vacant, I mean, the city's definition of being vacant may be that, you know, he's not operating the business on the property, but if he's still under contract with the lease, with the owner, I would say that it's still occupied. Therefore, this issue here, you would not need to request a variance, because the ownership didn't change. He's replacing the business with the similar business, and whether it's short-term, long-term, is beside the point. If Mr. Floyd wants to sell the property, he would have to break contractual lease and relieve him of his obligation. So, you know, that's, that's beside the part of anything that the city is, is doing here. I mean, you know, so I don't see that there's need of a variance, but if legal or whoever says that we need to, then I would, I would say that we need to grant a variance, because he's continuing a business that was, not continuing the same business, a similar business, and ownership has not changed, and to my knowledge, the vacancy issue is not interfered.
If I may ask a question of our council, and I should have read, I should have read this to look it out. Does the ordinance state that the property is, is just not to be vacant for six months, or does it use the word abandoned instead, or how's it phrased?
It uses several words. If you'll give me just a moment, I'll pull up the exact words.
And while it's just, it comes to question about the property that was, that inside of the, is it abandoned, or is it still being?
Not at the moment, it still, it still is. Without getting into his personal finances, which the rule should discuss at hand, yes, he's still having ownership of assets as well.
That would be a good item to know, because number one, hearing from property owners and some businesses around that area, their biggest concern is they did what was required to open their doors for the codes. And if we grant a variance, we set precedent that why didn't, why didn't they do what they did? If it is what you're saying, then there's a legal way for them to do what he's wanted to do. Council to grant a variance of this magnitude is, in my opinion, pretty extreme, because it's lacking the best evidence that have done what was required. Yeah, so that's where I'm struggling with that, because, I mean, you have, you have two people, you have current businesses that have, and you have a new business, and we obviously want a new business here, and finding that balance is, that's a part, that's a part of it.
The one, the ones that you're talking about, though, did present construction on the line, that was not previously occupied, was that one that's previously occupied, and asking to be occupied again in the same business?
Okay, I'll, I'll read you the couple sentences. This is in the chapter 46 in the zoning chapter of your ordinance. It says, "Whenever a nonconforming use is abandoned, all nonconforming rights shall cease, and the use of the premises shall thenceforth be in conformity with this chapter. Abandonment shall involve the intent of the user or owner to discontinue a nonconforming operation and the actual act of discontinuance. Discontinuance of a business or the vacancy of a building or premises occupied by nonconforming use for a period of six months shall be construed as conclusive proof of intent to abandon the nonconforming use."
So it's the use and not necessarily property that the use that has to be shown for six months?
Well, it's abandonment of the use that requires then the premises be brought up to current standard.
And Mr. White, I hear you're going to have a chance to, to try and respond to Mr. Jasko's last question. Or we're ready anymore?
I don't have all the answers to that. I know that, you know, one of those owners is, does lease. I know they're probably, you know, they turned over a lease. One of them did, they currently had, they had to bring it up, well, they didn't apply for any variances, so they actually burned it up to code, so, I mean, they obviously could have applied for some variances, because there was some things that they had to, I mean, number one, but I don't know the details of all of them, but that's, I know that there's some concern from some of the local businesses, you know, that.
We, we associate.
In my line of work, where I see is, I guess more specifically, it's like restaurants, for instance, anytime a restaurant goes out of business, a lot of times, there's going to be another operator that wants to come to that existing space, because of the equipment there and all those types of things. That, new Leesee still has the obligation to bring that space up to current code, so I appreciate you answering this as well. I clarify that, you know, I appreciate that.
Anything, a motion to, to grant or deny the variance?
I want to make a motion to deny.
There's a motion to deny a variance? Is there a second?
Second, yes.
A second, all in favor of denying the variance? We have two, three in favor, and so the motion is to deny the variance. So we move on. Item number seven, consider and take any action necessary regarding a request by the owner agent of the property situated in the city of Van Alstine, county of Grayson, state of Texas, being described as divisions Van Alstine Block 3 Lot East 1/2 of 7, or East 1/2 of 7, 140 by 150, more commonly known as 278 North Dallas Avenue, currently zoned commercial district -1, for variances to Van Alstine code of ordinances, section 46-37D[1186.12][1186.12](in parentheses), area setback height and coverage regulations to reduce the required side yard setback. Is there any discussion among council or questions? I see no hands. I have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the variance?
A motion has been made to approve the variance? Is there a second? There is a second, all in favor of approving of the variance? And that is unanimous, so the motion varies. All right, and now we are going to adjourn. The time is 6:52, and we're going to adjourn from zoning board of adjustment and convene the regular city council meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't say, I didn't get it. Okay, the time is 6:53, and the first things we're going to do, we're going to do things a little out of order here, we're going to first take up items, all right, well, no, first, okay, I need to do citizens communications first. Wow. I've never had this before. Oh, okay. This is all one? Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, and I'm just going to go top to bottom, it's really not appetizing, and so from Mr. Jerry Sheehan, Mr. Jerry, Mr. Sheehan? Yes, sir? Come on? Yes, sir, that was your call.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, for heading here tonight, my name is Jerry Sheehan. I live in Sherman, but I own a business in Van Alstine. We're new to Van Alstine, but the clinic that we own, which is Van Alstine Medical Clinic, is not new. Been here many, many years. It was owned by Dr. Sutka, and he has since retired. Well, I want to thank you, Mayor Cooper, and Councilwoman Jaska, for meeting with me a few weeks ago to discuss an issue on hospitality, and I just want to expand on that a little bit, and I think we had a really productive meeting about maybe making a checklist for new businesses that move into the area. For instance, I was ignorant of occupancy permits and building permits and getting permitted to do everything we needed to do, because we moved locations, as you know, to, from one side of the highway to the other. Well, you know, I, I detected a kind of adversarial relationship with the city manager, and I think that we got that cleared up with you and the councilman, about the fact that we need a, a list of things that new businesses coming into the area should know about how they have to do things. And I think constructive criticism is always better than any kind of adversarial relationships, because, you know, I was in city government in Sherman for many, many years, sat on city commission, liaison with human resources, city manager, and we, we just had a can-do, welcome to Sherman attitude. And I want to see that can-do, welcome to Van Alstine attitude, because we're here. We want to be part of this community, and so we would like to see something adopted by the council that would include a list, so that people who come into the city hall who are new to the area, want to bring in a business, know from 1 to 10, 1 to 5, whatever, what they need to do to get permitted correctly. It's a, it's a laborious process, and I found out that one employee of the city might not know what someone else knows, and consequently, we have a miscommunication, and we need to avoid those. So that's my suggestion, to adopt a checklist, so we don't have this problem in the future, and also to say, we're happy to be here, we're seeing patients, and we want to be part of Van Alstine. Thank you so much.
I will tell you now, you and I can't debate, you know, your incorrectness, however, I will tell you that, that your criticisms have been taken very seriously.
Thank you very much.
That much of a fact I can tell.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
And next is from Ms. Marguerite Ballard.
It was confusing to me on filling out the paperwork or what's on here, is it done?
It's about it?
Yes.
Is this about the 721, whatever you did?
Yes.
Okay. He'll get to that in just a second.
Okay, because that was confusing to me.
It's part of the 721. She came through and so.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
You know, we don't want to forget you, that I don't, I was going to just go through the citizen communications, however.
I wanted to make sure, I wanted to make sure that I filled out all the papers.
Yes, sir. Don't let me forget you. All right, Jordan Stewart and, is that Luanne?
Joe.
Luanne, I'm sorry.
Yes. So Lucy.
So thank you for letting me speak here. My name is Jordan Stewart. I'm the volunteer coordinator for the Grayson Crisis Center, which serves all of Grayson County, southern Oklahoma, all the way over to Cook County, Fannin County, Van Alstine, and sometimes Water and McKinney, so we actually serve about 3,000 square miles, in my knowledge. We were here to speak just in generalities about what crisis center does, and the fact that this is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, that is April, that's why I'm wearing teal, teal and purple. Ms. Salusi is our Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner for Grayson County. She's also the coordinator for the program. She has three nurses under her chart, two nurses under her chart, between training. And we were just here to speak on behalf of what Crisis Center does. We've actually seen 35 cases of sexual assault since October 1, the inception of the Sexual Assault Response Team program. I'm here to speak about our volunteers. I've got five active Sexual Assault Response volunteers who are now in the process of training and responding to calls whenever someone comes to the hospital. So we're just here to share our thanks to the city of Van Alstine for having a crisis center in the area. We've been here for 41 years. We're going to continue to do what we do, and that's to respond to survivors of sexual assault and domestic violence, and we're very appreciative of your support, and also the city of Van Alstine's police department as well. And if y'all have any questions, you know, don't hesitate to ask, don't hesitate to contact us. If there's any education that you all would like about domestic violence and sexual assault in your community, it is always important to talk about it, it is never a secret. We are here to educate and inform and advocate on behalf of survivors. So thank you for your time.
So this is related now to item number 14, which is the presentation and proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2017. So, and I thank you for speaking. Now, I have two proclamations here, however, it looks like they're both the same one, and so we will have a proclamation signed, I will be signing it.
Okay.
Oh, no, I covered it up. Pardon me, that's my fault.
Okay.
All right, and I will be signing this proclamation, and I thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. And also, I wanted to direct your attention, I've given you all, given some brochures to your tables. It just talks about our mission, it talks about our services, and to the community, we also have some of our brochures here in the back, and also, I brought some, if anyone here owns a business and they would like to place a little tear sheet in their restroom, it's really handy for a survivor to come up, grab it, call a hotline, get some information, especially since you never know who, you know, might be affected by domestic violence or sexual assault. It's very important to advocate on behalf of survivors, so if y'all have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask us. So, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. And the next is from Robert A. Young, or Robert A. Young, Jr., and I have some handouts here. Oh, this is regarding Force Performance in Van Alstine relocation. Do you want these to be passed out to councilors?
Yes, sir. If you would.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you this evening. I'm Robert Young, from Force Performance. I've been building performance race car turbochargers since the late 90s. I founded Force Performance in 1999, and we And we have our turbochargers on some of the fastest in-world drag race cars in the world. Dubai, Russia, South America, Asia, America. We dominate in-world drag racing with our turbochargers. We've been based out of McKinney since 2002. We relocated from Austin to McKinney in 2002. And it's been six years, eight years, 10 years that we've outgrown the building we're in. We've been looking for a place to expand into and grow. I don't have room in my building to put more people, to put more turbos together. I don't have room in my building to start a new engineering department and hire interns. I don't have room in my building to store pallets of materials that we use to build turbochargers. So we've tried to find a new home. We want to come to Van Alstine. We started talking with the Economic Development Council, EDC, in 2016, last year. At the end of the year, we were offered a very interesting offer from them of a line of credit to help us with our move and encourage us to move to Van Alstine. Something not uncommon with the EDCs and cities that are trying to grow. We're excited to have such an offer from the EDC. So the day after I received the offer, I went to the city council, the city hall, and I applied for a building permit. You can see it's on the attachment. December 30, 2016, the box for building permit is checked and I paid $88.45 to start the process. On that day, in December of 2016. We proceeded with haste. If you look at another page in my handout, just seem like timeline. We applied for the CO, we get the permit. A few days later, on the 3rd, the EDC president signs our agreement. So the agreement with Force Performance and EDC is fulfilled. Two days later, I sign the lease with Clint Murphy, the owner of the armored property, just off the exit on Henry Heinz Expressway. I signed the lease for the 10,000 square foot property based on an email conversation that I had with the fire chief where he explicitly described to me and explicitly answered my question, will I need a fire suppression system in this building? Which he clearly said, no, you will not need a fire suppression system in this building. You will need to cut those trees down, you will need to move that container out of the way, you will need to improve the road access around the building with hard-packed gravel so that the fire trucks don't get stopped. But there's a fire hydrant right in front of the building. And if you do these things, you will not need to add sprinklers into your building. So we proceed MEPs. Everybody know what an MEP is? Mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineering. It's a package that for remodeling the inside of this 10,000 square foot building costs about $6,000. Its set of papers are big, they roll up and you turn them to the city. It takes a little while to develop these. You don't just say, hey, I want MEPs, here's my back of the napkin sketch, and then they deliver it to you. It takes a little while. On March 1st, we submitted the MEPs. See the other steps in the timeline there where we're working on what the floor plans are like, working towards having the MEPs. Unbeknownst to me, I didn't receive any advice anywhere in this process from anybody nor see a sign anywhere on the many times I stopped by Frank Baker's office to visit and just say, hi. Codes are changing. Construction codes are changing. We're moving with the times and we're adopting new codes. I never saw anything like this anywhere. I think this kind of hits on what the first gentleman was speaking about. Wouldn't it be nice if you were going to try to move to this city that you had a list of check this, 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 this? And you knew that verifying what codes were in effect or if by chance that you happened to walk in the door the day out of a 10-year period where they update the codes, you I know of. Because that's about what happened to me. When was the last time the codes were updated? It was 12. 12 codes were in effect, I think.
2009 codes, we were six years behind. We didn't move them. 2012 codes. 2015 codes came into play because we were informed that the state was mandating we move to electrical plans. Whenever we checked, we verify, so we does our building, plumbing and electrical inspections, they had stated that Anna Melissa will move to 2015 codes total. We followed suit. That's exactly what that was saying. I think you missed a few things and you did speak to the fire chief and spoke to one of our fire inspectors. He did go through the plans and he did give two options with the 2015.
I'm doing this down. I might have forgotten exactly who I spoke to. I'm sorry.
And so he gave you two options in that email. And the email stated that you could either sprinkle the building or you could do the other option. There were two options in there. I'm sorry that you got caught up in this.
Not what the email said, Mr. Baker. You're wrong about that.
No, sir. He gave you two options.
Well, it did not say you have an option to sprinkle the building. It says, he explicitly said, you do not need sprinklers. That's why I signed the lease, that's why I signed a five-year lease moving to this building. And then a few weeks later, I'm told, A, what we told you is wrong, you will need a fire suppression system in the building, adding tens of thousands of dollars in expense. That was not in my timeline and not in my, not in my vision.
Once the plans got to the fire department, which is where we use life safety plans, looked through them, there were not any life safety plans submitted.
I didn't realize we were going to be able to have a back and forth. I had shot on the agenda so that we could do that. But I just thought that was my treatment.
And so some of the things that you agreed correct. I am applying with factual comments.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm under the impression some of the things you're saying are right.
Okay. And we can agree that this grant is on the board.
So anyway, we're here and I have a lease now for a building that I can't move into, that I was told I wouldn't need sprinklers for. And I'm not building turbos in Van Alstine. And I'm not hiring the kids from the community college down the street. And I'm not paying taxes here. And I'm not growing, and I'm not expanding and not owning more turbos every day than I am, than I have been for the past year. And that's what I want to do. I don't want to argue with you, Mr. Ballot. It's the last thing on my list, you know? As a matter of fact, I'd like to build some turbos. And I'd like to do it in Van Alstine. I like the town, I think it's great with the town. And I think the old industrial park over here that Clint owns is a great setup. And it's a shame if I'm not going to be able to fulfill this lease. This is a building for us to move into. What I'm asking for, what I hope, what the city council could come somehow say, you know, Mr. Young, I think it looks like you did start this project before we changed the codes. And I think you did have the right intention for doing what you did. You did ask the right questions. Maybe it was an oversight on your part, maybe it was, maybe somebody at the city could have said a little bit more, somebody could have advised you a little bit better. But through no fault of your own, you're faced with a 50, 60, 70,000, I don't know exactly how much, sprinklers. That, you know, really it's just going to cause this whole project to not happen this year, not allow us to relocate. I'm in the lease, I'll have to negotiate some resolution with landlord on these, because I have a contractual obligation that I entered into for the lease after being told that I wouldn't need to put the fire suppressors in my building. Maybe I'm missing some things. Maybe I could have read things a little more clearly. Maybe I got some of the details wrong about who I talked to. But I'm not wrong about what I did and I'm wrong about what I want to do, which is to move to Van Alstine, hire some people and grow my business. And that's really what I'd like to do. And that's about all I've got to say.
Thank you for your comments and this won't end the discussion.
Well, I hope not. I had a plug to be on the agenda and I was denied. Somebody said that I could do something.
Mr. Young, I want you to hear.
Well, I'd like to come here, Mr. Jessica. Thank you, sir. Y'all have a nice evening.
And Mr. Clint Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor, lady councilman, councilman. I was the architect and followed Robert's little speech. We moved up here in 2002. We came up here, building was empty. I bought the building, we got it back. I started building, building around because I was expanding. Well, in 2005, '06, everybody started shrinking back then. So I started moving back, leasing my buildings to other people. Well, I have number four building. Number four building is a good seller. I had, I think it was ended, I had moved immediately out. And while we came up, I'm buying here, going over here and going and asking for it. I've leased it. I said yes. And so he started the process of trying to get in. Then we made, like you said, as an agenda or as a timeline, that we went through, trying to get a CLC, started building. So it seems like the city, I don't know, it's also, I don't know, the city manager, somebody dragging their feet. This thing has happened three months. And it's not going yet. Looks like it just, you know, to a point of stop. We're required to do sprinklers. That's, okay, I can understand the saying, I can understand the fire department didn't get any good. But it was about never having a loss over 35 years. I don't see. But it seemed like the city has a whole demand to go back to everything that was available or they didn't have. They're putting, they're picking on, maybe they're not focused. So they just, you know, we've never been thrown that way. I don't think we've ever done.
All right. Of course, I will tell you. Yes. As I said to Mr. Young, this won't be the end of the discussion. This is something that I think has interested, and Mr. Baker, of course, also. And so this won't end. I appreciate your wonderful time. Let me tell you what's going to happen.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. So those are all of the things. And now I'm going to move on to item number 15, which is Presentation of Proclamation for Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. We have a number about motorcycles here. So did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, I just wanted to say a few things.
Yes, sir.
My name is Steve Gotts and I'm with Texas State. I'm joined today with a lot of my brothers and sisters from Grayson County. I recognize everybody that came in, I apologize. But there's at least five clubs and organizations that are joining here today. I don't want to bore you with a lot of statistics, but typically when we receive these proclamations, we're very thankful for the citizens of the community. We go back in statistics, most recent statistics that we have to serve, 2015, that were complete and verified. 2015, as many of us know, was the deadliest year in 50 years for fatalities. That's motorcycles, motor vehicles, pickup trucks, everybody. The most deadly year of 50 years was 2015. Motorcycles is no exception. On the national average, motorcycle fatalities in 2015 had increased 8%. Part of that reason was because for seven years we enjoyed decreasing fatality rates. So when 2014, 2015 was such a large increase nationally, that it's 8% increase. In Texas, I'm proud to say that our fatality rate had only increased 0.8%. And that was rounded up to 1%. So even though we have one of the longest riding seasons in the nation, probably some of the best roads in the country to ride, we've got over half a million registered motorcycles in Texas. Our fatality rate had only increased 1%. I'm real proud to say that. And I contribute that factor to communities like Van Alstine who take the proactive approach, not only declare May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, but who book an entire year for motorcycle safety awareness. And I sure appreciate you all having us here, Mayor, councilmembers and citizens of Van Alstine, your representative.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I will be signing this proclamation. Now, let's see. I'm going to move back to. Well, now, actually, we have Presentation of 14. Okay. We're going to move back to, on this regular city council meeting agenda, going to move back to item number three, which is a public hearing. Conduct a public hearing regarding various zoning text amendments to the city's code of ordinances, Chapter 46, zoning, in quotes. Which includes, but is not limited to, amending Article 1, in general, unquote, Section 42, no, 46-2, definitions, unquote. To add or revise certain terms. Amending Article 2, quote, district reglet, regulations, unquote, including amendments to Section 46-44, quote, off-street parking and loading requirements, unquote. Amending Article 3, quote, specific, special and non-conforming uses, unquote. Section 46-66, quote, use of land and buildings, unquote, to amend use tables for education, quote, educational, institutional and special uses, unquote, and affecting the uses, including but not limited to hall, reception, banquet, events, wedding and meeting building, facility, room or portion thereof, and other impacted uses, and any necessary amendments to Section 46, unquote, special uses. Is there anyone here to speak on this? I'm on the public. Single hand. But this is, is this part of your discussion in Mr. Baker's meeting?
Yes, sir.
And what, do you mind? This is Mr. Jim Ashington. He chairs our plan of zoning permission. What wish you have for recognition?
I do recommend the city to find us.
Yes, sir.
I have a recommendation for the local council. I also recommend that remember, how can you spend it if it was planned and where that use would be on the city?
Thank you. Second call, do you have a final answer or question? Yes, sir.
Good morning, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and Council. My name is Kristy Bryant and I just want to thank, thanks first and foremost for, I'm excited to be here in the town of Van Alstine. As most of you know, I'm an city councilwoman. I bought the Van Alstine hardware store and went through the permit process. And I'm restoring basically to every piece of that building and trying to bring it back to its glory. I had sat there quite a few years untouched. This is my 17th historic project. And I typically have tenants in there, but this time I'm going to be a tenant. And then one of my spaces, which this relates to this specific hall, reception, banquet, event venue, would relate to me, it's the back space that's tied to my property. That space is Preston Road property, or Preston Road, formerly known as what Mr. House, the former owner called the Pike Room. That building that I had was, that space was totally in disarray. You can walk into the background, and many of the public has never seen that space. You can walk in the background and literally see rain dropping from the sky through the building to the floor. And it just basically was falling apart. So I feel like we're doing the right thing by restoring this property. And we're not cutting any costs whatsoever. We want the community of Van Alstine to be able to enjoy this particular space. It's 2500 square feet. We've gone through the efforts of the permitting, worked through with the fire department. We're following every, basically every code, which I feel like the city was very fair with me. It was a good job. I worked through with and through the fire department, with the city. And I personally had a good experience with them. They did a great job and did some of the work. The fire department came through, walked it with me and said, okay, this is what you need to do. And I felt like it was someone, I just checked the boxes. But in my defense, and maybe some of the other community members, I've done a lot of permitting. Like I said, this is my 17th project. And there's probably a checklist in order, but I didn't really have any problems with it just because I've done this before. But I think they did a great job, basically going down the list of what I was told to do. Even the city was very proactive for me and would just check off the boxes. But back to the specific issue at hand, I'm the one that actually requested with P&amp;Z to add an ordinance for the event venue. And the reason why I want to do this is because in the historic downtown Van Alstine area, there's not a lot of space that the public can go and enjoy this historic building and sit down and actually convene. There's the library and this space, but a lot of the individuals wanted to share in that historic reservation, in the history, that. that historic reservation, in the history, that hardware store, which is my building, that had been in business for over a hundred years. So I'm trying to bring a piece of history to the community. Yes, it is going to be for fundraising events, two thirty-one events, things like that, or charitable events. I do want to give back to the community, and I do want organizations to be able to rent it for their venues and to raise money, and give back to the community. I also want businesses to be able to come there and just do think tanks, someplace where you can actually go sit down and convene, have just a conversation. That's part of doing downtown Van Alstine, which I can attest to that, because I'm trying to make a copy somewhere, and I'm like, hey, where do I go? And I have to say, the chamber's been incredible to me, the EDC's been incredible, they've been very helpful to me, so I've had a very good experience. But I'd like to share this space with the public, I'd like for them to, for your daughters' game now, okay, daughters' game, your daughters' game, or you want her to have a frat party there, or sharing your grandchild's birth, or something like that, have an event for them. I want them to have a place to go, and another option for them to go, too. So that's why I request it.
And now, the business overall is going to be eighteen seventy-three market?
Eighteen seventy-three market and cafe. The reason why I named my business that, which that's the part that faces Marshall Street. The reason why I named it is because that's the year the town was born. And I feel like that really will help make community awareness and tie the people back into our city pride. I'm not from here, but I feel like I'm already a part of this community, and it's welcome to help me with those ones, and I'm just grateful to be just this way.
And this, this building is on the north end of that same building?
It is.
It's an additional, it's a new, it's a building that was added to the form?
No, it's an original building. I'm not changing the, the actual structure itself. If anything, I'm actually rehabbing it. Like I said, the structure was basically, the floors were watered out, the storefront had basically fallen apart, because it had not been touched for probably twenty-two or thirty-five years. So I'm redoing that entire storefront, obviously with a permit, got permission first, but super excited for the community to be able to see it. But it faces Preston Road. My business, I have a cafe and a market and a store, which is tied into that, divided by a firewall, fire separation, so when the people are at the event venue, after and in or evening, they do have, if they need to close it off, they do have that fire separation protocol.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, I appreciate it.
All right, and so on to item number four. This is a, let's see, this is a second public hearing? We had this public hearing before, sometimes we have to have one. Oh, I know that the planning and zoning has discussed that issue, and I know this is at least the second hearing. And so I'll let you read the item, item number four. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request by the owner agent, agent of property being described as college edition block two, block eight, and worth sixty-five feet slash two of seven, a vacant lot, twenty-seven twenty-one WA Denton Drive and seven seventy-seven WA Denton Drive, to change the current zoning of single-family residential district dash two, or SF two in parentheses, to two-family residential, duplex in parentheses, a TF district, two-family. And I know that, I want to read, you want to discuss this one?
My name's Marguerite Ballard, I live at seven thirty-two WA Denton Drive along with my husband. We had gone to the city council on the planning ward with two other families, and I became away with the impression that it was a done, a done deal, until I got the notice in the There are no duplexes in the immediate area, but it's all single-family housing. There used to be a house on that lot, which used to belong, it hasn't, it's been vacant for at least more than twelve years, I lived there twelve years. There are four houses on the block. The two houses on either side of the vacant lot, they do not have a garage, they park in their front yard. There's really not any parking in the street, so if we did put a duplex there, which is a small block, I'm concerned about the parking issue that, and also having a duplex in the middle of a single-family housing area. Two other families were appearing, and you're opposed, a fourth one opposed, but was not there. She said she had mailed in her objection to it. It was Wednesday night, and she was at church. Now, if they, we do allow this, hopefully, if the law will allow, because it's a small lot, a duplex, that they would have parking on their property instead of on the street. The only alternative is duplex going in, they would take up that whole block, and they would have to park, and my, my daughter. And sometimes, and when it rains, we have sort of a ditch, kind of real deep ditch, you're drainage, when my neighbors have their parties, and they park there, and you get somebody, you know, it's, it's very hard, you know, yard. That's basically all I have.
Have you, maybe we can start from now?
No. I believe the block's about seventy feet wide, and it's kind of an odd-shaped block. There are all the blocks around him, three-five houses on. Like I said, there are no duplexes in that area, it's all single-family housing, it is a little, it is known vacant lot in that area. And all around town, we're building single-family housing. That's just my, just our concern about that.
Are the folks still here? I didn't reach that. I spoke on, I didn't mean the item. And so, back to number fourteen, Presentation of Proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April twenty-seventeen. So that's the item that you, that you spoke on. And I have signed those proclamations, and so Jennifer will have to ask them for our file.
Will something be reading?
Um, I'll read. Sure.
And I've got one, sir.
Now, sir, are there two? There are two. There are, are there two different motorcycles? Five? Okay, well, I have two proclamations here, and let me see. Okay, all right, so I'm gonna read, one of the proclamations, there are two, but they say the same thing. So proclamation, motorcycle safety and awareness month, month, month twenty-seventeen, City of Van Alstine, Texas. Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycle, on the roads of our coun- our country, and whereas motorcycles are roughly unprotected, and therefore more prone to injury or death in a crash than other vehicle drivers, and whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle daily risks, risks, injuries, and most of all, fatalities, through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety, and whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcycles, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle that we have in the highways of this country, and it is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules, and whereas urging all citizens of our community to become aware of the apparent danger involved in operating motorcycle, and for riders and motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect they deserve. Now, therefore, I, Larry Cooper, Mayor of the City of Van Alstine, Texas, hereby proclaim the month of May twenty-seventeen as motorcycle safety and awareness month in this city. Further, I urge all residents to do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community. In witness thereof, I have set my hand and, and cause the seal of the city to be fixed this eleventh day of April in the year of twenty-seventeen. Jennifer, do you need the originals?
Yeah.
Okay, do you need anything? Van Alstine, Texas. Whereas, the month of April twenty-seventeen is recognized as sexual assault awareness month, and whereas, all over the country, organizations like Crisis Center have pledged to educate and support their communities regarding the devastating effects of sexual assault, and whereas, one in five women and one in twenty men will experience sexual assault in their lifetime, and whereas, community involvement is necessary in sexual assault. Crisis Center and the City of Van Alstine recognize the difficulties victims have when reporting sexual assault, and whereas, the Grayson Crisis Center has responded to over thirty sexual assault calls since the inception of the Sexual Assault Response Scheme on October first, twenty sixteen, and whereas, all are encouraged to contact the Grayson Crisis Center at nine zero three eight nine three three nine zero, or their twenty-four-hour hotline at nine's north eight nine two five six one five for more information. And whereas, community partners include Van Alstine Police Department, other local law enforcement, area hospitals and organizations, Crisis Center, and the City of Van Alstine recognize the dedication of those organizations in sexual assault in Grayson County, in Grayson County, and therefore, it is resolved that I, Larry Cooper, Mayor of the City of Van Alstine, Texas, hereby proclaim the month of April twenty-seventeen as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Van Alstine, Texas. And I have signed, and this is it. We were discussing, I'm not sure we finished that discussion, or the changes, single-family housing, there between seven twenty-one, twenty-eight, and seven seventy-seven. Okay. All right, I was gonna say, is there any, any other comment, another, if you have something to say, come on in.
Just mayor, city council, thank you, I'm a custom home builder, I build primarily in Gombe County, Fisco, we're a community down in Parker, and I ended up at this lot in Van Alstine, and got to look around, try to decide the best use for the lot, and so I actually have some documents here I'd like to share with you. First of all, I think it's important to, to share with you what I'm looking to do. This is a, this is a duplex that has been built here in the City of Van Alstine. Ours won't look exactly like that, but this is kind of what we're after. This is actually the, the, I forgot her name, this shows the lots around us, and shows when properties were initially built, and that's the town that we actually need to progress.
And are you just passing it out?
Absolutely, sir. I didn't know exactly how many there were, but.
And does that mean with, with the company?
This shows a map, an aerial map of Van Alstine from Van Alstine Parkway and North Waco, and what I have done on this document is, I've highlighted the apartment complex that's here, this is the Van Alstine Housing Authority, this location, this is the duplex, this is a duplex, this is a duplex, there's two duplexes here, there's two duplexes here, and this is our. So this is not something new, I'm not asking if there's something new here, this is in the same parcel.
For the city's edification, and it looks like the nearest duplex to your property is about the.
Two blocks.
Two blocks away, and there are, there are others that are more like, maybe, well, four blocks.
Three, four blocks.
And, and, and more yet, that are five, six, and seven blocks away, something like that, is that fair, sir?
That's fair, and there's a total of sixteen actual units, north of Van Alstine Parkway and west of North Waco Street.
How far is it across your block?
It's a seventy-five foot wide lot, I've had it surveyed, I actually have a plan that I, of course, I wanted to get approval first, but I have a plan that I'm looking at, that will still give me ten feet on each side, which is a setback, and there's room out in, in front for parking, I plan to do, eight parking spots out in front. So I understand the latest concern about parking, but there will be parking on our property for tenants.
And for, how many cars then, for this duplex?
Four. I'm thinking four, two, this could be two, obviously two units, two bedrooms each, probably most of those folks will have one or two cars, so I will provide parking for two cars for each, total four.
Anything else?
No.
All right, so thank you.
Thank you.
And is, is anyone else want to comment? And is, uh, does anyone else want comments? Questions? Last call, comments or questions regarding this item, this duplex. Seeing no hands, I'll move on. To the next public hearing. And this, this has been discussed somehow too. Conduct a public hearing regarding a question about the owner agent of the property being described as OTP Van Austin addition, block five, block S, ninety feet of fifteen and sixteen, more commonly known as 212 East Marshall Street, for a specific use permit to allow an events center venue use within the central business district. Now this, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. The, the planning and zoning commission spoke about, uh, a, a, a feminine ordinance. We'll change it when it goes to planning and zoning ordinance so that within the central business district. Let me just ask a question. Is it still gonna be required? It's still a special use, specific use permit, pardon. Specific use permit, it's still gonna be required? It will say our convention to the council is till now the events center will be central business district. Is that a special use permit? However, when the vote changes, if the council may take a different view, we did a further, I recommend a further special use permit. Should it be? So thank you. I would, uh, any comments or questions about this? Second call? More comments or questions? Third and last call. Seeing no hands, I'll move on to consent agenda for this meeting. Item number six, consider and take any action necessary regarding minutes from the March seven, uh, March 7th, 2017 zoning order adjustment meeting and the March 7th, 2017 special call meeting. Item number seven, consider and take any action necessary regarding a site remodel submitted by Claymore Engineering for McDonald's located at 1001 West Van Austin Parkway, being 2,100, no, 2.133 acres of, of block one, lot one, crossroads addition to the City of Van Austin, Grayson County, Texas, being a replac said addition, dash, volume fifteen, page thirty-seven. Item number eight, consider and take any action necessary regarding authorizing the city manager to sign an assignment and assumption lease for the property located at 601 Martin Duke Road to L N M N Holdings, comma, LLC. Item number six, I mean nine, pardon, item number nine. Consider and take any action necessary regarding a request by Larry Nichols to sublease the property located at 601 Martin Duke Road to Jesse Holt. Item number ten, consider and take any action necessary regarding passage of ordinance establishing the office of the municipal court judge of the City of Van Austin, Texas. Apparently, I, I guess we were lacking that. We've had a municipal court judge for some time. Item number eleven, consider and take any action necessary regarding, um, declaring an emergency and recommending award of well number five repairs in the amount of one hundred twenty-six thousand, four hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty-one cents to CCS Water Specialists Incorporated. Item number twelve, consider and take any action necessary regarding award of a sewer grinder pump project in the amount of eighty-seven thousand dollars to Fire Construction Incorporated. Item number thirteen, consider and take any action necessary regarding re-adanna of Deja James, Vicky Cupid, Rodney Williams, and Robert Jasker for library. And those are the, all of the items on the consent agenda. Do any of those need to come off the consent sheet? Pull thirteen out, consider. Oh, alright, okay. Um, item, uh, thirteen will be taken off the consent agenda because Mr. Jasker will have to abstain. So, are there any questions? Uh, we have a motion for approval of items six through twelve. Alright, we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. All in favor of approving items number six through twelve. Alright, it is unanimous, so those are approved. Now, back on item number thirteen. Uh, consider and take any action necessary regarding the appointment of Deja James, Vicky Cupid, Rodney Williams, and Robert Jasker to the library. Is there a motion? Is there a second? We have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Well, we have three voting in favor and one abstaining. So, and so the motion carries. Now we're moving on to the regular, uh, non-consent agenda. And people taking care of items fourteen, fifteen, the presentation of the, uh, proclamations. On to item number sixteen. Your presentation by Dr. David Brown regarding Van Austin and its mortgage bond. I guess you're...
You got something? If that's left. Good evening, gentlemen. I appreciate few minutes of your time tonight. And just to, as a courtesy, I wanted to come by and brief the council on our bond coming up, which y'all probably know the dates since y'all had the election the same day, on May sixth. We're trying to accomplish three items with voter approval. And the first one is, uh, if you've dropped a kid off at our elementary school lately, you know that we are needing a giant shoe hard to fit all the kids in. And we're ready for a second elementary school. And so the first item is to build a new elementary school. If voter approves it in May, uh, we'll start construction by July. We will have it open by August of 2018. So it'll be a one-year construction time with the city's help. And item number two is we want to refurbish our current elementary school. If you've been inside it, it's nineteen years old. And everybody keep calling it the new elementary school. But it's nineteen years old. Our maintenance department does a tremendous job of making it look good inside. But there's some features the new school's gonna have that we want the old school to have. And so we want to do some renovations and modifications to it. The third thing that we want to accomplish is kind of far sighted. And that is purchasing property to set the next high school on. And first thing I want to clarify is not high school number two. It will be a bigger high school to house when we run out of space at our current high school. And normally towns like Van Austin, as they grow, they don't think far enough ahead. And so when they have to build their next high school, where do they build it? Outside of town. Because it takes about fifty to sixty acres for the type, the size high school property we're gonna need. We would like to go ahead and purchase the land now where we can do it inside the city limits of Van Austin. We'd like the idea of it being part of the community. We'd like the idea of the fire and the police protection. We just think it's the right thing to do. We'd like to purchase some property near our current middle school and high school. If that happens, we'll have, the middle school would be a five-six. The high school would be a seven-eight. And then we would have a master plan, six A high school. We'd build it for six A, but it would be able to be master planned where hopefully you'd never have to move again. Okay? So that's thinking out there. Don't think it's gonna happen. It's definitely not happening in my tenure because I'm, I'm the short timer. But, uh, we think it'd be fairly short term. Another thing we'd like to do with the new elementary school, we're going to have a six thousand square foot, uh, starb shelter. The gym will be there. It will have a self-contained restroom area in it. It'll have a self-contained ventilation system in it. And there's a possibility, we'd like to work with the city. If the city wants a community starb shelter for non-school hours, it can be opened up as a separate and blocked off from the rest of the building. And so that's an opportunity for us to partner together on that. So the cost of all this, uh, the bond is for twenty-four million dollars. Uh, the big question, of course, as y'all know, when a bond's called, okay, how much is that really gonna cost us? And that's ten cents on the tax base. So we'd raise it ten cents. A two-hundred thousand dollar home, that's a hundred and seventy-five dollars a year. For with, uh, two thousand dollar, two-hundred thousand dollar home with the homestead exemption on. Okay? Early voting, most of y'all probably have that party figured out. Starts April 24th, goes through May 1st, or May, May 2nd, I think. First, May 1st and 2nd, it's open from seven to seven. Then the election day is May 6th. And happens to also be prom day. And it also happens to be the Educational Foundation's fun runs. You can come downtown on that morning and support the Educational Foundation and just keep on running and go down to the college and vote, uh, for the city election and the school bond. I would be happy to answer any of y'all's questions.
Off the top of your head, I, I don't know long distance, but things that you want to do for the whole?
The existing campus, uh, we're going to do, we're gonna refurbish the restrooms. You can imagine nineteen years of little kids going to the bathroom. Uh, I won't go any further than that. Uh, the hallways are currently wallpaper. Starting to fill and stuff. We wanted to do a wainscot tile halfway up and then do what we call resealable vinyl on top. And if you know elementary teachers, they like to staple stuff every place. And so that will be a continuous bulletin board all the way through the school with that resealable vinyl. The office areas right now are counselor and our assistant principal have a hundred square feet in their offices. So when they have families coming in and stuff, or groups of kids, there's not room. And so we're going to renovate in there and give them a little bit more space in there. And then, let's see, what else is... Oh, we're, the new school is going to have collaboration spaces outside the regular classroom where kids, groups of kids can get together and do robotics and Lego projects and reading and, uh, bean, bean bags and stuff like that. And we're gonna convert one of the areas at the current elementary school into a collaboration space in the center of that building. So those are some of the things that are being planned there. One unique thing that we're trying to do at the new elementary school also is connect, uh, Blasen Gate to Highway Five. Uh, through Graywood, okay? If Graywood, if the city builds that Graywood, uh, which I think y'all have all the money besides the little section, and we bought that little section. Uh, we can then, so people coming from the west side to drop kids off at the new elementary school and the middle school can come down the service road and never get on Highway Five. So it should pull some traffic off of Highway Five with this new going. And there are a couple of, uh, builders that are wanting to build in that area. And we, we think that some houses would be going up the same kind of street. Any other questions?
Michelle's current capacity, what do y'all anticipate in the time that we develop your school?
Current capacity, our elementary school is seven hundred. We, right now, are at, or I'm sorry, at six seventy-five. And we're currently at six thirty-five. We've been growing at the, uh, elementary school fifteen years. We will be over capacity at this time next year. And so, uh, we'd like to do for a couple of months, months, end of school year. And with everything that's coming in right now, we think we're growing. Ten percent right now, we think within a year, we'll be growing fifteen percent a year. And I think it will end up, within five years, we'll be at twenty to twenty-five percent a year student growth. But we're not building early. But we have room. We'll, we won't be overflowing, uh, at the first of next year. But by that year, we're, we're probably gonna have some challenges. Or I think we, um, I'll be out here, but, uh, the, the new regime, uh, will, so... But planning a beautiful new school with voter permission. And, uh, we hope to, uh, make the city proud of the things we do and we accomplish with the school addition we've been, uh, had. For the last six years, I felt honored to be here. And, uh, we can still live here and be a part of community and appreciation.
Thank you, please, thank you. And thanks for your free, uh, service. On item number seventeen. Consider and take any action necessary regarding various tech, zoning text amendments to the city's code of ordinances, chapter forty-six, zoning, which includes but is not limited to Amendment Article One, general. Section forty-two dash two definitions add, to add or revise certain terms. Amendment Article Two, district regulations, including amendments to section forty-four, uh, forty-six dash forty-four, off-street parking and road vehicles. Amendment Article Three, specific, special, and non-performing uses. Section forty-six dash sixty-six, use of land and buildings. To amend use tables for educational, institutional, and special uses and affecting uses, including related to hall, reception, banquet, dance, weddings, and meeting room facility, facility, uh, room, portion thereof, and other impact uses, and any necessary amendments to section forty-six dash sixty-eight, special use.
Yeah, so Ms. Bryant's doing a copy. Why this came up? Are there gonna be any businesses or projects or anything like that that we can add or some effective adoption? The wording has renovated by the community.
Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion to, uh, to approve changes?
What if, what if I be heard first and maybe since you just got this recommendation, you can be heard first in the executive session?
Sure, can that be a topic for executive session?
Yes, you're allowed to go into executive session for any item that's posted on the agenda.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for that because we have a lot of time.
Alright, so, um, for the time being, uh, do we have to table this or just?
You can just leave it as it is and then take it back up after the executive session.
Okay. I'm gonna move on to, uh, item number eight. Consider and take any action necessary regarding a request by owner agent of property being described as college addition, block two, block eight, and, uh, west sixty-five feet of N slash two, uh, seven. A vacant lot between seven twenty-one WA Denton Drive and seven seventy-seven Leominde Denton Drive. To change the current zoning of single-family residential districts or, as I said, two, two, two-family residential duplexes, you would see. That would, uh, can we issue fee on two, uh? Is there any questions or comments on the council?
Do we have to approve or be, um... Will the request be approved in the, on onsite?
Yeah, if you approve the zoning, then just the standards for two-family zoning that are in the zoning ordinance will be what they are required to comply with. If you wanted to add, to add special conditions to a base zoning category requires it to be a planned development zoning district or a special use permit or something. But I believe off-street parking is required in that zoning category.
Is there a motion? I'll have to have a question.
All that is, is pretty common. Or the parking area. It's a rezale, it's on the backside. The car is just the same. It was what you wanted, uh, first time. But that really should be parked. Or the parking should be.
Is there a motion? All my close to approve or approve? Alright, we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second? Okay, we have a second, all in favor. Oh, well, before I do that, is there any further discussion? Further discussion?
That zoning, what's, what's the facade requirement for that?
What was the question?
The facade requirement for that zoning.
Facade requirement?
Facade.
Oh, facade. Um, I mean, like, there's probably masonry. I did just confirm it for the parking, it's two off-street spaces for each unit.
I think, I think the other has been sixty percent.
There, there should be a masonry requirement. The chart is difficult to get to, like, me.
Okay. Special, we have a motion on the second, all in favor. Moving on to item number nineteen, consider and take any action necessary regarding a request by the owner agent of the property being described as U T P at Austin Edition, block five, block south, ninety feet of fifteen and sixteen, more commonly known as two twelve inch Marshall Street, for a specific use permit, to allow an event center slash venue to use within the central business district. And so now, we, because there's also an ordinance that's, that's going to allow, that, that, that could allow her to have this, this, yeah, to allow this, this specific use permit, or, or to allow it to happen, allowing her to build without a specific use permit. So those two are common.
Yes, your action on item, your action on item seventeen could make this one moot, potentially.
Okay. Well, then, okay, so we're going to take this into executive session. All right, and the next item is the parking report.
Jennifer?
For the month of March twenty seventeen, the administration, administrative department answered nine hundred and ninety-three calls in the twenty-three operating days, responded to eight requests for public records submitted via the website, and twenty requests for public records, along with six miscellaneous inquiries submitted from the website. The auditor has confirmed also that they will present to council at the May ninth meeting. We also worked to complete and submit the twenty sixteen financial disclosure report, which is required by the Securities and Exchange Commission. We accepted and processed two variance requests, one specific use permit and one zoning text amendment request. We issued five commercial permits for miscellaneous items and accepted one application for a certificate of occupancy. We had ten residential permits for miscellaneous items, and we issued one permit for new residential construction. However, to date, in April, we have had twelve new residential construction permits submitted for plan review and approval. We have accepted fourteen new utility account applications, ten utility account disconnections, and let's see, we processed eighty-three purchase orders, issued sixty-three general fund checks, sixty-two water fund checks, two court technology fund checks, one S and N enterprises check, nine insurance trust, trust fund checks, for a total of a hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty-six checks. And we also processed nine checks on behalf of the Economic Development Corporation.
Thank you, Jennifer. Sergeant Marie Gibbs?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Chief Bob Barnes had to be away this evening, so thank you for having me. On the police department's side, we received one thousand two hundred and seventy-four calls for service. Out of those fifty, fifty-two required incident reports, we have a new officer in training, so we incurred a hundred and sixty-eight hours of training. We received twenty-one requests for records. The communication center received a hundred and eighty-four calls from nine-one-one line. They utilized fifty-six hours of training, most of that training from the C M L website. And altogether, they received five thousand four hundred and forty-one calls in their center. On the municipal court's side, they utilized ten hours of training, and they closed two hundred and eighty-eight cases.
Thank you, Sergeant. Lieutenant Doctor?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have for you the call statistics for the month of March EMS calls, ran a total of a hundred and thirty-three. Fire calls, we had three-nine, which ended up having a total volume of a hundred and sixty-two. And the three CO fire inspections, along with the plan.
Lieutenant, Corporal Sturker, Steve Watt, Honorable Mayor, Council.
The city of Van Austin has completed the UV installation of a sewer plant that's more efficient and energy-efficient system. It is, reduces the higher, higher ECO readings. City of Van Austin is also getting supplemented with water, city water line. This is being done to allow Will Powers family. And the county, county road crew had finished grounding up the streets, were shaking, and packing the roads, with it, showing for a couple of weeks, and then with the two layers of chicken silo, it's all packed.
Mr. Stevens?
Deputy Mayor and Council, March is a busy month. At the library, we had thirty-four mutations. We broke through two thousand mark for our door count for the first time this year, to over two thousand items circulated as well. Library staff entered two hundred and forty-eight reference questions, nine and nine editorial questions, and assisted in the recording of some of the pictures with one-on-one computer house. We launched anonymous programs, four young adult programs, one adult. The queen of the library, the library staff, who has publicly recognized her as Nancy Webb for eighteen years, as servants of services, treasurer for the Friends of the Library, she plans to stay active in Friends of the Library's organization due to status, treasurer. We would like to invite everyone to the Friends of the Library's Spring Book Sale, which is taking place here at the community center, starting the Tuesday, not the members Thursday night, April twenty-seventh, the sale opens to the public, Friday at nine AM to four p.m. and Saturday, nine AM to two p.m. We've completed all major construction at the library, and all that's left is paint, which the color was chosen last Thursday. It is a silly color name, it does not describe what the color looks like at all. It's all that you guys look at it when it comes up, called the minute moth, and it's not moth, and a spending shade, which is, anyway, you'll see it go up probably within the next two weeks. We continue to fundraise for the abundant beyond projects such as signage and art and design work.
Thank you. Page one, you called?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. At the E D C office, we've submitted three R S Ps to the state. We had twelve come through that we didn't meet the specifications for. We have no building available, and we live on our land. I've had seven meetings with new prospects that are looking at Van Austin, submitted eleven purchase orders to the city for payment, two of which were payable to the city. We are working on a couple of different projects, as I've told you in much previously, that we hope to be able to make an announcement to you. Some of them are going through the permitting process through the city. One of our projects is for tonight's forced performance. E D C has been working closely with Mr. Robert Young, also with Clint Irving, as I said to you earlier. So just wanted you guys to know that we were on board with what their project is, and we're welcoming them to the city and trying to get their business here. So, thank you.
Mayor.
Just got an email today that's been VR working, asking for a final walkthrough on their last phase of their subdivision, so we're scheduling that next Wednesday. So you'll probably be asking for a plan for another fifty-five months, right?
City, thank you.
Mayor and Council, I appreciate Dr. Stevens bringing in fire and police protection, just informing the residents as well as yourselves. We currently only have one patrol unit on day-to-day, and I'm a fire department, even though you see all the, all the police vehicles next door, and you see all the fire equipment, EMS equipment, we only have two full-time firefighters on, just like we have one patrol officer on every day. During the daytime, we do have peak demands, so we've had two additional firefighters on. The question comes up as far as council having fallen suit with Ann and Melissa as far as codes and as far as ordinances are concerned, have sustainability and protection for this organization and this city. And you either put on more personnel to have that protection, that's appreciated, and that cost goes directly on the current taxpayer, or you put it on the businesses, and they pay for the systems that help identify the issues and the threats, so you don't have false alarms, you don't have false calls, and you take care of the threats accordingly and as efficiently as possible. So I appreciate Dr. Stevens bringing that up. Besides what Lynn was talking about, anybody that's gone by Paladium can see if they've got the roof on, so those hundred and thirty-two units, it looks like they're on schedule to have those hundred and thirty-two ready by June, which is their expected timeframe. Stone Hollow, out of their hundred, hundred lots, Jennifer gave you an update on how many permits have been pulled there. We're looking forward to Horton being released, hopefully next Wednesday, if they've got all their stuff done, and CGMA connection. With y'all agreeing to update well five and make the needed repairs for us to be able to take out of our largest production well, the connection to the CGMA water line will be disconnected temporarily to make the final connections into the valves and add a escape system updated where we can, we can see the capacity within the line that CGMA, that CGMA and G Q A oversee, as well as they can see what we have as far as capacity and as far as reserves are concerned. Steve brought you up to speed on the street repairs, and I appreciate everybody being patient with the dust, where you are having to see your street repairs throughout town, and it is on the ballot for you to consider again, to vote for. I hope you do, because, and the meeting of the candidates is coming up, the mayor and I are planning on getting together so he can articulate exactly what we've accomplished with the added street monies and the sales tax over the last four years. So I appreciate you, council, I appreciate you, everybody that's attended, whether happy or sad, the outcome this evening, I appreciate everybody coming out.
Thank you. I'll be brief, I want to remind you about meeting the candidates. That forum is going to be, is going to be right here at six PM on Tuesday, April eighteenth. And so we have three contested elections, and there are three questions on the ballot. And of course, you want to meet the candidates, and you want to hear, you'll want to hear about the questions that are on the ballot. And I thank you, I thank you all for attending this evening. It's turning into a rather eventful meeting, and it's going to be long yet, because I have a long executive session. Where's it? I'm not sure how long we'll be in there, fifteen, a couple of hours, but we are going to be next door, and so if you want to wait for the outcome, you're, you're welcome to do that. Thanks.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I need to read out one.
The council, the council gets to address you too, and I'm sorry.
I was just going to welcome everyone. Tomorrow morning, we're having a chamber breakfast over at the Welcome Center, from eight o'clock to nine o'clock. If you'd like to meet some of the chamber members, get a little bite to eat for breakfast, everybody's welcome. And I also have, in case anybody's interested in what's on the ballot, I printed off the Mariston Town website sample ballot, so if anybody would like one, and come over here and see what, see what the issues are, maybe candidates are, if you're all, don't go already.
Well, the time is eight seventeen PM, and so we're going to recess the council meeting now and go into executive session, I expect going to executive session at about eight thirty.
Mayor, item number twenty-three needs to be read out loud in the open session, please.
Executive session. In accordance with chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, open meetings law, in parentheses, the city council may meet in a closed executive session pursuant to applicable laws. Item number twenty-three, all items below for executive session, pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code annotated, subchapter five-fifty-one, the council will enter into executive session to discuss the following items. A, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney, in parentheses, regarding, rely, in parentheses, personnel staff, and, two little i's, in parentheses, dilapidated structure, and, three little i's, in parentheses, sale and or purchase of property. And so...
And also items fifteen and seventeen.
Okay.
You don't have to read them again, they're just part of the executive session.
Oh, all right, yes, okay. We decided to include those two.
Oh, I'm sorry, seventeen and nineteen.
Seventeen and nineteen.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the time is now eight-twenty PM, and we're going to recess the council meeting and go into its executive session, I think probably at eight-twenty-five. As I said, you're welcome to wait here if you'd like, and you don't have to. Is it working?
Yes.
Are we ready? Well, we have, we adjourned from our executive session at ten-twenty-eight PM on this, the eleventh day of April twenty seventeen, and the time is now ten-thirty PM, and we are going to reconvene the, the regular council meeting. And, let's see, I need to get my agenda out here. Yeah, let's see, so it's... Okay, all right, and so the item that we're going to take up is item number seventeen from the regular agenda, and I'll read it once again. Consider and take any action necessary regarding various zone text amendments to the city code ordinances, chapter forty-six zoning, which includes but is not limited to, amending article one, in general, section forty-six dash two definitions, to add or revise certain terms, amending article three district regulations, including amendments to section forty-six dash forty-four, off-street parking and loading requirements, amending article three, specific, special, and non-conforming uses, section forty-six dash sixty-six, use of land and buildings to amend use tables for educational, institutional, and special uses and affecting uses, including but not limited to hall, reception, banquet, events, weddings, and meeting building, facility room, or portion thereof, and other impacting uses, and any necessary amendments to section forty-six dash sixty-eight special uses. Now, it's my understanding that what was submitted to us, recommended to us from the Planning and Zoning Commission included, let's see now, I want to say this, in the, in the central business district, I think the, the decision is, is whether or not... in the central business district, I think the, the decision is, is whether or not to make a, a special event, no, well, an, an event building, making them purchase a special, a specific use permit, and the decision is, no, well, I guess we have to vote on that. What, what is the question? Whether or not an event center has to have a special use permit? Is that the single question?
So, let me, just for the record, the, the P and Z recommends that a, a term called special event center be added to the zoning ordinance, and that the definition be a building facility or room which is rented, leased, or otherwise made available to any person or group for a private event function that is not open to the general, that is not open to the general public, whether or not a fee is charged and may contain a business office used for management of the facility. And then they recommend that parking be required at the ratio of one parking space for every square feet of floor area, and then, of course, other areas of the zoning district may modify that, such as in the special, in the central business district, and then they recommend that this event, special event center use be allowed by right in Ag, C-one, C-two, C-three, central business district, and thoroughfare, and that it be allowed if a specific use permit is obtained in neighborhood, commercial, and office zoning categories.
So, that is the ordinance that we're, we're either adopting or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay, with that, that table of uses?
Yes.
Okay, so, is there, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance as written.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, it is unanimous, and so, that ordinance is adopted, those changes are adopted. And I, I believe that's it for twenty-four. Oh, all right.
But do we have to address nineteen?
Well, you can, we can just acknowledge for the record that nineteen is moot because item seventeen will allow that in central business districts, so they're not going to be required to seek a specific use permit. Seventeen and nineteen, I believe, are the only two items to take up for consideration following executive session.
All right, and so, I think we may adjourn if anyone wants to make a motion. All right, we have a motion and a second, and a second, all in favor? It is unanimous.